Ladies and gentlemen, please find your seats. We're about to begin. Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the Prime Minister of Canada, Justin Trudeau. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the 44th regular meeting of the Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, CARICOM. We are happy you are here with us this evening for the suspicious occasion, as we also celebrate the 50th anniversary of independence of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas and the 50th anniversary of CARICOM. We invite you to stand as we welcome all Heads of State accompanied by student leaders of our government primary schools. The Secretary-General for the Caribbean Community, Her Excellency Dr. Carla Barnett. Antigua and Barbuda, the Honorable Gaston Brown, Prime Minister. Barbados, the Honorable Mia Amor Motley, Prime Minister. Belize, the Honorable John Persino, Prime Minister. Dominica, the Honorable Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister. Grenada, the Honorable Decon Mitchell, Prime Minister. Guyana, His Excellency Mohammed Ifan Ali, President. Haiti, His Excellency Dr. Ariel Henry, Prime Minister. Jamaica, the Honorable Andrew Holness, Prime Minister. Montserrat, the Honorable Joseph Farah, Premier. Saint Kitts and Neves, the Honorable Terence Drew, Prime Minister. Lucia, the Honorable Philip J. Pierre, Prime Minister. Saint Vincent and the Grenadines, Dr. the Honorable Raleigh Gonzalez, Prime Minister. Suriname, His Excellency Albert R. Ramden, Minister of Foreign Affairs, International Business, and International Cooperation. Representing the President of Suriname, His Excellency Chandrika Prasad Santoki. Trinidad and Tobago, the Honorable Dr. Keith Christopher Rowley, Prime Minister. Bermuda, the Honorable Walter Robang, Deputy Premier and Minister of Home Affairs. Representing the Premier of Bermuda, the Honorable E. David Burt. British Virgin Islands, the Honorable Dr. Natalio D. Wheatley, Premier. Turks and Caicos Islands, the Honorable Charles Washington Missing, Premier. And Chairman of the Conference, from the Bahamas, the Honorable Philip Edward Davis, Prime Minister. One more time, let's give a warm round of applause for all our Heads of State. Please remain standing for the singing of the National Anthem of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, performed by renowned Bahamian female vocalist, Miss Alia Kohli, and the singing of the CARICOM song by Bahamian singing sensation Wendy.
Lift up your head to the rising sun. Come alert, march on to glory. Your bright banners waving high. See how the world marks the manner of your very. Bless you, exile, through love and you. The sea pressing onward, march together to a common long jungle. Set it sun, though the weather hide the wide and trench. The souls of your head to the rising sun. The arm of land, tell the road you trod. Lead unto your son, march on. Many distant lands, our forefathers came. Some seeking adventure, some bound in chains. Through battles waged and fought, through victory and pain. By test of their courage, our freedom was gained. In homage to those gone before, the heroes that lands in the sun. We vow to join hands and to focus on building one Caribbean. Raise your voices high and sing with your courage, your pride. Sing it loud and strong as our hearts beat as one. Celebrate its song as we rise to heights where we belong. Sound the victory drum for CARICOM. Though great and diverse beings, our ethnicities. The bonds that unite us are stronger than thee. We dine and pray, we love, we dance and we play. We relate to each other, the rest in the unknown way. Today as a people united as one to the brand new one. We look to a brand new horizon. We CARICOM. Raise your voices high and sing with your courage, your pride. Sing it loud and strong as our hearts beat as one. Celebrate its song as we rise to heights where we belong. Sound the victory drum for CARICOM. Helelewafo. Opuyosem CARICOM. Lelelewafo. Nakyojone CARICOM. Tafoya tafowafo. Helele CARICOM. Raise your voices high and sing with your courage. Yes, sing it loud and strong as our hearts beat as one. Celebrate its song as we rise to heights where we belong. Sound the victory drum for CARICOM. Helelewafo. Nakyojone CARICOM. Lelelewafo. Hele. Tafowafo. Nakyojone CARICOM. Lelelewafo.
Remain standing for the prayer by the Most Reverend Patrick Pender, Catholic Archbishop of the Archdiocese of Nassau.
We pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. O God of the nations, be placed before you the proceedings of this 44th regular meeting of the Heads of Government of CARICOM. Grace their discussions with an abundance of wisdom, courage, compassion, and discernment in dealing with the challenges of our region. Grant the delegates and participants wisdom to grasp the complexity of the issues facing our nations. From poverty to irregular migration, from climate change to food security, from public health to unemployment. Grant those gathered for these talks the courage to face the challenges of our region with honesty, impartiality, and in the best interest of all. May the discussions be graced with compassion so as never to lose sight of the most vulnerable, the most at risk, the most disadvantaged persons among us. Let them be guided by the words of the Prophet Isaiah, "A bruised reed he shall not break, and a smoldering quik he shall not quench until he establishes justice on the earth." Lord, grant each participant the power of discernment to distinguish rightly what is the genuine common good. Let the light of your divine wisdom direct this meeting and shine forth in all its proceedings. Where there is common agreement and understanding, let there be gratitude. Where there is difference and disagreement, let charity and decency prevail. Breathe your own spirit into these discussions, Lord, a spirit of discipline, order, justice, truth, and gentleness. Even in moments of difficulty and doubt, keep the flame of hope ever burning in the hearts of all the delegates. By your grace, Lord, may this gathering here in Nassau be a benefit to all in our region and beyond. And thus give glory to your name through Christ our Lord. Amen.
You may be seated. Under the direction of Mr. Ashley Knowles, welcome the Bahamas National Children's Choir, performing a medley of Bahamian cultural songs. Goldfish fighting, I have no way to catch them. Every marie man got they own goldfish. Good morning, Mr. Fisher, good morning, Father Brown. Have you any bad crowds to sell me one or two? Goldfish fighting, I have no way to catch them. Every marie man got they own goldfish. Every marie man got they own goldfish. Every marie man got they own, own fish. One more time for the Bahamas National Children's Choir. Welcome the Secretary-General of CARICOM, Dr. Carla Barnett.
Welcome the Secretary General of Caricom, Dr. Coler Barnett.
The Right Honourable Philip Davis, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas and Chairman of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community; Your Excellency Chandrika Persad Santoki, President of the Republic of Suriname and outgoing Chairman of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community, who isn't with us tonight, but we will hear his message later on; Your Excellences, Heads of State and Government of the Caribbean Community; Right Honourable Justin Trudeau, P C M P, Prime Minister of Canada; Honourable Mr. Justice Ian R. Winder, Chief Justice of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas; Honourable Patricia Devoe, M P, Speaker of the House of the Assembly of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas; Senator Honourable Vashal Adherly, President of the Senate of the Parliament of the Bahamas; other Heads of Delegation, Heads of Regional and International Institutions, Members of the Diplomatic Corps, Delegates, People of the Caribbean Community. As I welcome all of you to the forty-fourth meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government, I do so with the thought in mind as our Caribbean community approaches its fiftieth anniversary that milestones are generally marked achievements, not merely the passage of time. There will be time in the coming months to assess our achievements and justifiably celebrate the landmark anniversary. But for this evening and over the next two days, the focus of attention is on the pressing issues of the day. This will be done in the beautiful setting provided by our hosts, the government and people of the Bahamas, whom I thank for the excellent arrangements and the warm hospitality we have all experienced since our arrival. This is conducive to a most productive meeting. Let me at the outset register the community's appreciation and thanks to the President of Suriname, His Excellency Chandrika Persad Santoki, the outgoing Chairman, for his outstanding tenure over the past six months. His calm demeanor and thoughtful leadership guided the community through a difficult time. Thank you, Mr. President. And I welcome and congratulate our new Chairman, the Prime Minister of the Bahamas, Right Honourable Philip Davis, and look forward to supporting him and his ideas for achieving our integration movement in the coming months. I also welcome to his first regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government the Honourable Dr. Terence Drew, the Prime Minister of St. Kitts and Nevis, who assumed office last August, following his party's victory at the polls. Similarly, similarly in recent electoral contests, similarly victorious in the recent electoral contests are the Honourable Gaston Brown, Prime Minister of Antigua and Barbuda, and the Honourable Roosevelt Skerritt, Prime Minister of Dominica. Congratulations to them as they continue to contribute to the development of our region. It gives me great pleasure to acknowledge the presence of the Right Honourable Justin Trudeau, Prime Minister of Canada; Dr. N'gozi Okonjo-Iweala, Director General of the World Trade Organization; Professor Benedict Orama, President of Afrexim Bank; and Mr. Sergio Diaz Granados, President of CAF, the Latin American Development Bank. We welcome you as friends and as supporters of the community. I also take this opportunity to congratulate Dame Janice Bostwick, who will be bestowed this evening with the Caricom Triennial Award for Women in recognition of her sterling efforts. Thank you, Dame Janet, for your sterling efforts in promoting the rights of women and girls in the Bahamas and across our region. Heads of Government, distinguished guests, delegates, ladies and gentlemen, our Member States and the global community of nations continue to face many challenges. Many of our economies began to rebound from COVID-induced contractions only to be affected by sharp inflation and shipping bottlenecks. COVID-19 continued to hover and the conflict in Ukraine carried on. Our Member States again faced a continued onslaught of climate change with the destruction caused by storms, rain events, and drought. Our hard-won development gains continue to be threatened by these challenges. Yet, the Caribbean community did, as we often do, we rallied against the challenges. This is particularly important in 2023 when we celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of the community. This is the year when we commemorate the vision created, the courage had, and the legacy left by those who went before us. It is the year when we renew our commitment to the community and enrich this unique legacy for those who will follow us. This meeting provides us with an opportunity to make long-lasting decisions for our peoples for the next fifty years and beyond. The forty-third regular meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government held in Paramaribo, Suriname, in July 2022 made consequential decisions. I will refer to just two of these. The convening of this meeting as a regular meeting, not an intercessional, follows the agreement to establish a calendar of six meetings of the conference annually, with regular in-person meetings being held in February and July and virtual intercessional meetings scheduled during the year. The conference in July also agreed, in the context of the bilateral relationship with the United States, to urge for the removal of sanctions on Venezuela to allow, among other things, for progress on exploitation of cross-border natural gas fields between Trinidad and Tobago and Venezuela. This advocacy has borne fruit with the announcement last month by the United States to waive sanctions on Venezuela to allow for the joint project to proceed. At this meeting, decisions on issues such as climate change, food security, and community governance would have a lasting and positive effect on the region over the next fifty years. However, even as progress is being made on some fronts, Caricom and indeed wider international community continue to struggle to help Haiti resolve its multifaceted crises. We will continue our efforts to assist all stakeholders in Haiti to ensure a Haitian-owned resolution to the crises. We will have to show the resilience and the fortitude of the Haitian people as we strive to overcome challenges and advance the initiatives to improve the lives of all citizens of our Caribbean community. That goal, to create a safe, sustainable, prosperous, and viable community for all, has been the guiding principle of our efforts for the last fifty years and will continue to guide us over the next fifty and beyond. I thank you and welcome you to this conference.
Continuing in the spirit of celebration, performing a dance presentation choreographed by Mr. Robert Bain with musical accompaniment of an arrangement by legendary Bahamian percussionist, Mr. Peanuts Taylor, welcome the National Dance Company of the Bahamas.
Mama le le le.
Mama le le le.
Mama le le le.
Mama le le le.
White gown and then she called.
Mama le le le.
Go away, girl, I don't want to see you.
Mama le le le.
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 Island woman. Island woman. She's making me forget who I am. Island woman. Island woman. She's making me forget who I am. Your vision's good near your island. That's why I came back for more. I saw you swim near my old island. I followed you back to the shore. Island woman. Island woman. She's making me forget who I am. Island woman. Island woman. She's making me forget who I am. You dance for me in the moonlight. We drink, we rum, and have fun. But when I wake up every daylight, you take my money and run. Island woman. Island woman. She's making me forget who I am. Island woman. Island woman. She's making me forget who I am. Island woman. Island woman. She's making me forget who I am. Island woman. Island woman. She's making me forget who I am.
Ay, ay, ay.
At this time, we would like to recognize the presence of the newly-elected Head of Government of Antigua and Barbuda. Prime Minister the Honourable Gaston Brown. Please give him a warm round of applause. Welcome the newly-elected Head of Government of St. Kitts and Nevis, Prime Minister the Honourable Dr. Terence Drew.
Good evening, all. From where I stand, a sea of beautiful Caribbean people, I wish you had this vantage point as I do. Gives me great hope that our future as a civilization is, of course, cemented. It's a pleasure. Let me, of course, say from the onset that I recognize all the Heads of Government who are here. But let me recognize our Secretary General and also our Prime Minister, Prime Minister of this beautiful country of Bahamas, Prime Minister Davis. And I see, of course, a lovely lady next to him, and if it is your wife, I want to recognize her as well. Let me recognize also two special guests, the Prime Minister of Canada, Prime Minister Trudeau. And he apologized earlier for not bringing his wife. And of course, President Orama from the African Export-Import Bank. I deem it an honor for me to deliver brief remarks at this forty-fourth intercessional meeting of the Conference of Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community in this beautiful city of Nassau, in the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. I would wish to place on record my appreciation to the government and people of the Bahamas for the excellent arrangements put in place for my delegation and all the other delegations at this meeting. And in the same vein, I would like to congratulate my colleague, the Honourable Philip Davis, on his resumption of the chairmanship of the conference and express my confidence in his stewardship in guiding the proceedings of this meeting and throughout the course of his tenure. I address you today in the context of my recent election to office following the general elections of August 6, 2022. I am conscious of the mantle of leadership and the strong mandate given to me by the citizens and residents of St. Kitts and Nevis and pledge to do my best to ensure that our decisions at this level are down to the benefit and by extension to the people of our Caribbean community. Chairman, our Caribbean community today stands at the crossroads where we must focus our attention on the myriad of challenges confronting us as small island developing states and low-lying coastal communities in an ever-increasing hostile global environment. Our challenges are well-known to us. And I point out a few. Vulnerability to the external economic shocks, heavy dependence on a few products or services. frequent and more intense natural disasters, high costs associated with debt and climate change adaptation and mitigation, economic recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic, disruption in supply chains and steady increase in the cost of imports and production exacerbated by the ongoing war in Ukraine, and limited access to grants and concessional financing mechanisms to enable us to recover from external economic and environmental shocks. These overlapping challenges are cross-cutting in the effect. They impact all sectors of the economy, forcing us to play catch-up as we advance our respective development agenda. CARICOM has remained an effective forum for its members to carve a space for the international community to seriously address the structural challenges we face as small states. We strongly believe that greater consideration should be given to the Multi-Dimensional Vulnerability Index as a more holistic metric for addressing the complex issues I highlighted earlier. It is more closely aligned to the ever-present danger we face on an annual basis, having to endure the ravages of natural disaster, including hurricanes, drought, volcanic eruptions, and rising sea levels. Assessing our high GDP does not adequately consider our vulnerability to economic and climate-related shocks. The analysis must involve a holistic approach to addressing vulnerability and provide solutions that are effective and sustainable. The time has come for the international financial institutions to take positive actions to address the realities we face and enable us not only to recover from national disasters, but adapt to the existential threat of climate change by building stronger, more resilient communities to benefit the lives of our people. The St. Kitts and Nevis remains committed to the strengthening of the CARICOM Single Market and Economy, CSME, which we regard as training ground for engaging with the wider global economy. We believe in the free movement of skills, services, and goods, capital, and other key elements of the CSME. We view the region as a single space for the people of our region to live, engage in robust economic activity, and advance the economic and social prospects of our region. It is difficult for us to extol the virtues of the CSME without addressing the proverbial elephant in the room: intra-regional transport. The reality is that it is too difficult and too costly for the people of the region to move and exercise their rights within the single space created for them to do so at optimal levels. For example, coming to this meeting in Bahamas is a classic case in point. Many of us had to fly to Miami overnight there before taking a flight the following day to our destination here in Nassau, Bahamas. It takes no less than twenty-four hours to move from country to country within our region at times. Compared to other nation-developed countries with highly-developed transport means and modalities, we in the Caribbean remain at a disadvantage in realizing the benefits of the CSME that the framers of the CARICOM Treaty envisaged. Moving from New York, for example, to Washington, D.C. takes a mere four hours by car and less than two hours by aircraft. The contrast is a stark reality of the challenge we face on an ongoing basis here in the Caribbean. Further, Chapter Six of the Revised Treaty of Chagaramas provides the framework for inter-alia, A, the organization of efficient, reliable, affordable transport services throughout the community, and the promotion of cooperative arrangements for the provision of transport services. We recognize that several bodies of work have been invested in this regard. The Caribbean Development Bank and other key players continue to seek a sustainable solution to fix the gaps that exist and breathe life into Chapter Six of the Revised Treaty of Chagaramas. From our vantage point of view, the government of St. Kitts and Nevis has explored several options in collaboration with a few partners to make it easier for people to move to and from our jurisdiction to engage in business or leisurely activities. We encourage other member states to do likewise. We can do it together. We cannot rest on our laurels while the efficiency gap gets wider, causing us to fall behind in achieving our development objectives. And as we approach the celebration of our golden anniversary of our beloved Caribbean community, I urge us to redouble our efforts to improve the effectiveness and efficiency of organs of our institution. Let us strengthen the pillars of functional cooperation. The theme selected, "Fifty Years Strong: A Solid Foundation to Build On", is quite fitting as it encourages us to consider our rich legacy and build a stronger, more prosperous future. St. Kitts and Nevis remains committed to strengthening regional integration in the upcoming year and beyond. Thank you very much.
Amplifying the happy spirit of the islands, performing a hit song, "My Islands in the Sun", please welcome local singing sensation, Lady E.
And I say, "Boy, my island's in the sun, 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 sun." Bring it up now. And I say, "Boy, my island's in the sun, can't have a time if you're boss when I come to party, drunk and sick and wet. So, boy, my island's in the sun, can't have a time if you're weak or be weak and frightened, winding up a misbehaving. Give me the cabbages, give me the drums. We're gonna party, party till the morning comes. Young wind up your waist, like you come to mash up the place. It's the Heineken Carnival. And I say, "Boy, my island's in the sun, can't have a time is it? And I say, "My island's in the sun, can't have a time is it? CARICOM! Seven hundred islands run through me. This bush give me plenty energy, confidence. My sex to Mount Regatta, drinking gin and coconut water, walking day on the goomba, party all night and day. And I say, "My island's in the sun, CARICOM time again. And I say, "My island's in the sun, CARICOM time is it? Here we go! St. Kitts, Haiti, Barbados, Tristan-Caitan, Bahamas! Wreck and scrape and junk and do, master roach and boss a move, grab your pants and seal and sew, that's how we Bohemians go. This we culture proud and strong. Rob your cow's ass, beat that drum, wine you a scowl, come alive, this is Caracan. I say, "Boy, my island's in the sun, CARICOM time is it? Yeah, yeah, I say, "My island's in the sun, CARICOM time is it? Celebration time is in the air. Love and unity in the atmosphere. We got that Bohemian pipe, mama tell us deep inside. So, put your hands in the air, give me people's ear. I say, "My island's in the sun, CARICOM time is it? Yeah, yeah, I say, "My island's in the sun, CARICOM time is it? Come on! I say, "Give me the cabbages, give me the drums. We're gonna party, party till the morning comes. Young wind up your waist, like you come to mash up the place. CARICOM! And I say, "Boy, my island's in the sun. And I say, "My island's in the sun."
At this time, we acknowledge the contributions of the Honorable Tandrika Prasad Santoki, former Chair of CARICOM and President of Suriname, who was unable to join us at this time. Please turn your attention to the screen for his presentation.
Raise your voices high and sing of your Caribbean pride. Sing it loud and strong, fill our hearts, be there's one. Celebrate in song as we rise to heights where we belong. Sound the victory drum for Caracan. Helle, helle, wow, wow! Op, op, you sting Caracan. Lev, 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 wow!
Colleagues of government, incoming Chairman of the Conference, Prime Minister Philip Davis, Secretary General of the Caribbean Community, Dr. Carla Barnett, Ministers and senior officials of member states and of the Secretariat, distinguished delegates, members from the media, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening. At the outset, allow me to express sincere appreciation to you, colleagues, and all attendees at this opening ceremony of the forty-fourth regular meeting of the Conference of the Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. It has been a pleasure to work with you all. Let me begin by thanking Prime Minister Philip Davis, his government, and the Bahamas people for hosting this conference and for their outstanding hospitality to all delegates. My apologies for not being there physically because of the budget, negotiations in the parliament, and also other domestic issues which need my attention. But I am here virtually to address you all. Distinguished colleagues, friends, ladies and gentlemen, as I hand over the chairmanship of CARICOM in the able hands of my colleague friend, Prime Minister Philip Davis of the Bahamas, I also take this opportunity to extend congratulations to him for assuming the chairmanship during this six months. I'm convinced that with your experience, eminent capability, and commitment, you will undoubtedly lead our deliberations and decision-making in an excellent manner on many issues facing CARICOM member states. Taking our community a step further on its way to strengthening the integration process and its position on global matters, please be assured of full support and cooperation of me, the government, and the people of Suriname during your chairmanship, my friends. It has also been a privilege for me to have served the Caribbean community in a leadership role over the past six months. And more so, at a time when we were dealing with many global challenges, including the aftermath of the COVID-19 pandemic, the ongoing Russia-Ukraine war affecting energy prices, global supply chains, and food security, as well as with the challenges of climate change. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, as we celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of CARICOM this year, we are reminded of the vision and goals of the founding fathers, Forsen, Bernham, Errol Beryl, Eric Williams, and Michael Minley, premise on our programs utilizing the resources of the region towards satisfying the needs of the region and competing internationally. Over the years, the region has taken significant steps in creating a solid integration movement. The Revised Treaty of Chagaramas, which provided, among other things, for enhanced cooperation among member states, bears testimony to always solve, to work collaboratively towards one goal: sustainable development of the region. This is particularly significant with respect to accelerating the progress towards the CARICOM Single Market and Economy. We are carrying on with our work to facilitate business between our countries. In that regard, the CARICOM Interactive Marketplace Suspension Procedure, SIMSIPRO Portal, was launched last year. SIMSIPRO provides a platform where entrepreneurs from CARICOM can offer their products from raw materials to finished products. It also provides a strategic aim towards improving the efficiency of our regional suspension mechanism directly aimed towards encouraging production. More so, it seeks to develop our industrial policy. Therefore, I encourage the private sector to use this platform well. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, as part of the integration process and to facilitate the free movement of skilled persons, in July last year, heads of government agreed on the definitions of skilled workers, household domestics, agriculture workers, and private security officers. In terms of agriculture workers, it could not be timelier as we seek to boost production and to reach our goals of reducing the region's food import bill by twenty-five percent by the year 2025. And by mentioning this fact, I extend my compliments to the Cooperative Republic of Guyana, the Lead Head in the CARICOM Quaysay Cabinet for Agriculture for spearheading this objective. As there is a great potential to expand the production of non-food items that are most heavily imported into the community, the Conference decided to add a new portfolio of industrial policy to the CARICOM Quaysay Cabinet. Since Suriname was assigned this portfolio in collaboration with the CARICOM Secretariat and specialized institutions, we have been working to prepare a draft action plan. It has been proven that exports provides countries with growth opportunities. Therefore, it is crucial to expand and diversify our production. In this respect, I call on member states to participate actively in the process of the Industrial Policy Program to develop the export potential of the non-food sector to contribute to the community's economic growth. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, regarding fostering CARICOM-Africa relations, I recall the convening of the first Africa CARICOM Summit held in Bridgetown in 2022. Under a theme, "One People, One Destiny, Uniting and Reimagining Our Future", separate from our region's historical relations with the African countries, it is incumbent upon us to strengthen ties with one of the world's most dynamic and fastest-growing regions. Within the framework of South-South Cooperation, I also recall the celebratory meeting in Barbados for the fiftieth anniversary of the CARICOM-Cuba Relations. The G20 was another opportunity for CARICOM to bring its challenges and opportunities to the international table. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, there is no more significant threat to our children, planet, and future generations than climate change. Climate change is a living reality. However, the outcomes of the major international climate change conferences did not meet our expectations and lacked the ambition and action so much needed. the ambition and action so much needed in our community. However, emerging from COP27 was an agreement to establish a fund for loss and damages, a significant achievement, particularly for small island and low-lying coastal developing states such as our member states. Climate change, desertification, water scarcity and environmental degradation are life and death realities. I believe these issues remain pertinent and should remain on our active agenda as we move forward to COP28. At the Summit of the Americas, a meeting with U.S. President Joseph Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris resulted in establishing three joint committees to address cooperation on finance, food security and energy security. The attacks by Russia on Ukraine have complicated the recovery from the COVID-19 pandemic and slowed down a return to normalcy in a post-COVID world. However, we have shown that we will overcome the challenges confronting us with the determination and creativity inherent to the Caribbean peoples. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, as Lead Head responsible for sports, please allow me to express once again appreciation to the following athletes who have represented the region exceptionally at the regional and global levels. We pay tribute to three fastest women in the world who all hail from Jamaica, in particular Thompson Hera, who finished in first place to win the gold medal in the 100-meter dash at the 2021 Olympics in Tokyo, Mrs. Shelley Anne Fraser Price, who is now the only athlete ever to hold five individual 100-meter world titles, and Mrs. Sharika Jackson, who led the way in the 200-meter. The entire Caribbean is proud of the performance of the Jamaican women who brought home so many medals and were instrumental in Jamaica, being third in overall medals won. Anderson Peters from Grenada for the second world title in the Javelin Show and the excellent Mrs. Sean Miller Yubu from the Bahamas, who brought home a world title in the 400-meter. I congratulate all athletes and the entire region. Sports are a cornerstone for developing a healthy population in the Caribbean, and because of your drive, the children in the Caribbean can dream of someday becoming also world champions. Distinguished colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, yes, our sister nation Haiti is in need of our concrete and feasible assistance. We must support the Haitian people. Building on our discussions in the past year, I look forward to how and in what way this assistance can be provided. Democracy, free and fair elections, rule of law and certainly the protection of fundamental human rights are indeed at the core of the Caribbean civilization. We must foster and protect this also in the sister nation in need. Distinguished colleagues, friends, ladies and gentlemen, allow me to conclude with a note of thanks. First of all, I would like to express my gratitude to the Bureau members for the teamwork and their invaluable support and advice throughout. Furthermore, I express appreciation to the Secretary General and her team, particularly the Secretariat, for all their work in facilitating the work and efficient running of my chairmanship. My appreciation also goes to the Minister, staff and members of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, International Business and International Cooperation of Suriname and the CARICOM Desk at the Office of the President. I thank you all and may God bless you all.
It is now time for the presentation of the 13th CARICOM Triennial Award. Let us welcome the esteemed honorary, the Right Honourable Dame Janet Bostwick. Welcome Mrs. Sierra Ratten, a 2022 youth parliamentarian and current student of the University of the Bahamas, who will read the citation in recognition of the conferring of CARICOM's 13th Triennial Award for Women.
Good evening. Citation: Conference of the 13th Triennial Award for Women on the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick, C.B.D.B. Whereas on the 4th of June 2021, CARICOM announced that the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick, venerated bohemian, esteemed intellectual and respected altruist, will be the 13th Outstanding Woman from the Caribbean community to receive the CARICOM Triennial Award for Women. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick is an outstanding counsel and attorney, a model politician and a pioneer among women in the Bahamas. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick is admired and respected as a champion for the empowerment of women, not only in her native Commonwealth of the Bahamas, but also in the region and beyond. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick has the distinction of having achieved several firsts in her career, these include the first female Secretary General of the Bahamas, the first female prosecutor, the first female president of the bar association, the first female chairman of the bar council, the first female member of parliament following her election in 1982, first female Attorney General and first female Minister of Foreign Affairs, and also the first female to act as the Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick has held the portfolio of the Minister of Social Services, Housing and National Insurance and Minister of Justice and Immigration. Throughout her tenure as a cabinet minister, she has always held ministerial responsibilities for women affairs. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick's activism on women issues is renowned, having started her campaign in the mid-60s and continued throughout her political career. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick served as a trade unionist and campaigned to improve the status of women, primarily because of the inequities they faced regarding the gender pay gap, nonexistent maternity benefits and job insecurity. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick, upon admittance to the bar, became an even more vocal advocate for women's rights to audiences in churches, women's groups and unions for more participation of men in the rearing of children, and the changes in legislation related to sexual offenses, domestic violence and matrimonial matters. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick, in her quest of women's rights, between 1994 and 1992, led the Bohemian delegation at the OAS Inter-American Commission of Women and served on its committee. Since 1994, she has served on the Executive Committee of the United Nations Commission on the Status of Women. In 1995, she served as a Regional Vice Chairperson of the Bureau of the United Nations Fourth World Conference on Women in Beijing, China. At this conference, she was the head of the delegation of the Bahamas, and the Bahamas was unanimously selected to coordinate the Caribbean region. In this capacity, she presided at all CARICOM meetings. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick, in espousing the cause of women and development, has pursued this interest with rigorous scholarships and distinguished herself that in 2001. She was presented with the University of India's Vice Chancellor's Award for Excellence in Teaching, Administration, Research and Public Service. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick broadened her advocacy to include the administration of justice and young persons, the maintenance and resolution of issues associated with children born out of wedlock and improved custody. And whereas the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick, in paying tribute to outstanding academic, political and social and philanthropic contributions of this year's awarding, we acknowledge the fact that the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick has been an inspiration and mentor to the younger generation of Bohemian and regional scholars, politicians and social activists. And now, therefore, at this 44th Regular Meeting of Heads of Governments of the Caribbean Community on this 15th day of February 2023 in the year of our Lord, we now so confer upon the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick.
Ladies and gentlemen, please welcome the Honorable Philip Davis, Chairman of the Heads of Government of CARICOM and Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, who will present the 13th Triennial Award for Women to the Right Honourable Dame Janet Gwenneth Bostwick.
Thank you, thank you very much, the Honorable Philip Davis, Chairman of CARICOM, Your Excellency Dr. Carla Barnett, Secretary General of CARICOM, Heads of Government and Heads of State and Associate States, delegates, Mr. President Justin Trudeau, Mr. President Ramah, leaders from countries around the world. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm really overwhelmed. And I'm taking an elderly woman's prerogative. They gave me seven minutes, but this is a little bit longer than seven minutes, please. From November 1957 and for years afterwards, I sat at my desk on the second floor of the Supreme Court Building, Nassau, and I witnessed the Friday morning congregation of women, some of them with their children outside the magistrate's court below as they waited for trial of their summonses for maintenance or seeking restraining orders in domestic violence matters. I heard their cries. That was my introduction to family law matters, but over the years, I became painfully cognizant of the inequities suffered by women in most aspects of life, not only here in my country, but throughout the region. But it was actually at a CPA conference in 1991 in Harare, where I was exposed to women who knew firsthand or had experienced personally unimaginable gender-based violence and atrocities, immolation of widows on the burning pyre of their deceased husbands, female gender mutilation, forced child marriages, deprivation of education or health services, and the list goes on. And it was then that I knew that I had to be a part of that group, which sought change and global recognition of men and women as equal partners in every respect. Much has been accomplished since that time, and I thank those who've enabled me to make a contribution to that change. This starts with my parents, Lois and Nick Musgrove, my one brother now deceased, and my sisters, Lois, Lynn, Jackie, Willie and Linda. I thank you for your support. And there, there's my husband, Henry, an extraordinary man, a spouse who encouraged, inspired and sought to motivate me to seek election to parliament from the time we were childhoods, on schools we had, high schools we had. And that was even before women had the right to vote in the Bahamas. An extraordinary man who became my champion in many ways, but who is not here with me tonight because of advanced dementia. I honor you, Henry. I hold the torch of freedom. I hold the torch of freedom. I hold, I continue to hold, the cause of freedom and good governance for both of us. Then each of my children, Margot, Kelly, Lisa, and John, who sacrificed mom time, who campaigned, supported, and at times shielded and protected me, suffering great abuse and personal degradation because of their parents' political involvement, but who have developed into strong individuals, all nationalists of whom I am proud. Their partners, my grandchildren, Alexander, Arya, Stephanie, John III, and Victor, who is the only grandchild able to be here with me tonight. My great-grandchildren, nieces, nephews, and in-laws, thank you. I thank my adopted sons and daughters. I thank the latest Clement Maynard, Kendall Isis, and Cecil Wallace-Webbfield for their support. I extend my special thanks to former Prime Minister Hubert Ingram, who entrusted me with ministerial portfolios which played pivotal roles in the development of our country and enabled me to be involved in most of those activities for which I am today being honored. My thank goes also to former Prime Minister Hubert Minnis for the national honors that he bestowed upon me. And I also thank our present Prime Minister, Right Honourable Philip Brave Davis, for presenting this honor to me today and for memorializing my election to Parliament by erection of a plaque in Parliament. Thank you. I extend my very special thanks to former Ministers Franklin Campbell and Dr. Jacinta Higgs for recommending me for this prestigious award and to the CARICOM Committee for choosing me from an array of very distinguished and qualified women, so that I now join the rank of 12 exceptionally outstanding women of the community who have made invaluable contributions to the development of their nations and the region. I am grateful. Very much has been accomplished, but much remains to be done. We do not have the luxury, ladies, of focusing our attention primarily on achieving gender equity or equality. With the real threat of climate change, we must fight now for our very lives and the continued existence of our nations. And women who are always the most vulnerable should lead this fight. We are blessed to how Prime Minister Mia Motley lead the charge against climate change. And we're so proud because she is a woman. But all of us must do our part. The lives of our children are at stake. We must take personal responsibility to ensure that our actions lead to the decrease of carbon emissions in our own countries and to guard against pollution of our waters by ourselves as well as by international vessels cruising our seas. We must encourage our governments to be mindful in the trade of our precious carbon credits to ensure that that trade does not facilitate the continued level of emissions by those whose decreased emissions are essential to our survival. There is much to be done. I heard the cries of those women in the Caribbean. And if you listen, you hear the cries of mothers now. They cry for food security. They need food for their children. They cry for cessation of violence. They cry for better education and for better and affordable health services. And yes, they cry for equal rights with their men. While we do not in any way discount the rights of all persons to pursue those objectives that are specifically important and relevant to them and the choices which they make, we must be careful to not be distracted from our cause for the rights of women. It is a battle that is still too far from victory. And it is a battle which, in my humble opinion, is not receiving the acknowledgement, attention, and action that is required to ensure that the injustices are eliminated. It is a battle that has been relegated to a position of lesser importance, and it's been choked by the clamor of others. This is tragic. Every one of us who ever existed came into existence through woman. We cannot, we cannot afford to give precedent to the rights of others if we do not first successfully address and eliminate the inequities that exist throughout our diaspora and indeed throughout the world in respect of the rights of us women. I submit that for this, we need no redefinition of woman. There is much to be done. We hear the cries of Haiti. Haiti's problem is a CARICOM problem, not one to be solved by others. We must be seen to unite and fight for Haiti. I pray, heads and delegates, that God guides your deliberations in this respect and that this conference results in action which addresses the problem without the historical exploitation of Haiti. God guard your deliberations. And again, I say, thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, Dame Janet Boswick. We are so appreciative of all that you have done and continue to do for the Bahamas, the Caribbean, and the world. Ladies and gentlemen, we are proud to present the Crown Jewels of the Bahamas, a group of young people who have well represented us all over the world. Under the direction of Mr. Dexter Fernanda, we present to you the Bahamas National Youth Choir. Ladies and gentlemen, it is with great pleasure we introduce the incumbent Chair of CARICOM. Please stand and give a warm welcome to the Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, the Honourable Philip Davis.
Good evening, please have a seat. Your Excellencies and fellow Heads of Government, honoured and distinguished guests from within and beyond the Caribbean region, ladies and gentlemen. I do like to take this opportunity though to recognize that in our midst we have the Deputy Secretary of State for the United States, Brian Nichols. Is he still here? Yes. I think Senator, former Senators John Kerry and Chris Dodd, my friend, it's Chris. Thank you all for joining us here. And of course, our friend Justin. Welcome to the Bahamas. It's been a long time. I continue to remind him that this was his father's second home. He spent a lot of time here with Dame Margaret Pinling, who is present with us tonight. I also acknowledge the presence of three former Prime Ministers. I start with the senior, Hubert Alexander Ingram, Perry Christie, Honourable Perry Christie, and Hubert Alexander Minnis. I welcome them all here. And just let me say to all the delegates and friends, welcome to the islands of the Bahamas. And welcome to the 44th Regular Meeting of the Heads of Government of the Caribbean Community. You visit us as we embark on celebrations for our 50th anniversary of independence. During these 50 years, we have steadily created every major institution in our country, defining ourselves not merely as being independent of others, but as free people determined to pursue our own path to fulfillment. But even as we embarked on this road to self-determination, we knew that we could not go it alone. As our founding father, Celine Pinning, proclaimed on our accession to membership to the United Nations, we wish to enjoy the friendship and benefit from the association, the wisdom and experience of those who wish to be our friends and respect our freedom as we want and know it. So it was that we also join this regional family of nations. In this joint celebration of the 50th anniversary of our independence and the 50th anniversary of the founding of CARICOM, in a very real way, there is a deep understanding and pride to have come this far. And as it is in the Bahamas, so it is that our region also faces a host of opportunities and an array of challenges. We should take great comfort from the fact that our four bears came together 50 years ago exactly for this purpose, to take full advantage of the opportunity of our time and to implement solutions to the challenges that confront us. The four pillars upon which our relationship stands has borne fruit in good times and in bad. Our commitment to functional cooperation has been powerfully expressed in education, health, and culture. Our coordination in foreign policy matters has strengthened and amplified our voice in global affairs and given us great influence over the outcome of international debate. As near neighbors, our collaborative efforts to enhance our mutual security and for some, to advance economic integration, has united us in common cause to promote national and regional development. Our shared history, steeped in triumph and struggle, is testament to our resilience and determination. In the coming days, we will need to draw on that experience as we engage with the many issues on our agenda. Colleagues, friends, I believe we are in vigorous agreement that the crisis in Haiti requires our urgent attention. The turmoil and suffering there continue to worsen. As a near neighbor, the Bahamas is under great strain, and many other countries in our region are already heavily impacted. We will all benefit if Haiti is again fully functioning as a state. We should learn from the failures of past efforts to help rather than use these disappointments as an excuse for inaction. I pray that we can agree a series of concrete steps to help move towards a solution for the Haitian people and the region as a whole. We have learned that inaction has its own costs and consequences. Nowhere is that more the case than on the issue of climate change, which threatens to upend our lives around the world and possess an existential threat to so many of us in this region. Yet, even though we in the CARICOM region are especially vulnerable to the rising sea levels and temperatures, erosion of our coastal communities, and hurricanes which are more frequent and more intense, by working together, we show that we are not powerless. I have no doubt that in joining our voices last year to present an agreed position at COP27, we helped to influence the shift in position relating to loss and damage arising from the impact of climate change. There is also genius amongst us. The Bridgetown Initiative, which proposes reforms to the global financial architecture, is a shining example of how this region has much to contribute to solving critical international issues. Even though it is not the result of climate change, the disastrous earthquake which recently struck the border region between Turkey and Syria is a reminder of what unseen natural events can do. As of today, over 40,000 people are reported to have died. Countless others are missing. We offer our prayers and condolences to all those affected. Colleagues, friends, other issues also command our attention. Colleagues, friends, other issues also command our attention. Investment and cooperation in education, infrastructure, food and energy security will help to support our collective national development. For all the losses and havoc wrought by the COVID-19 pandemic, it did teach us valuable lessons about what's important and about what we need to do to save lives and livelihoods. For example, here in the Bahamas, we have in the past talked about the need to ensure food security. But since the advent of the pandemic, we recognize that the need to be able to feed ourselves was not just an economic nicety but a matter of survival. Some of the other priority issues are more protective. We should seek to strengthen our collective response to end the smuggling of drugs and guns, and we must do all that we can to wipe out the misery of human trafficking. Let us seize the opportunity provided by this meeting to make concrete progress in each of these areas. We must remain alive to the possibilities. Our friends at the Afriexim Bank have allocated already $1.5 billion to invest in the Caricom Should remaining members join those of us who have already signed the agreed memorandum of understanding, that figure would be doubled to $3 billion. I encourage you to sign. By moving together, we can achieve something which benefits us all. You know, colleagues and friends, the newspaper headlines from 50 years ago, they are startling similarities to the ones we see today. Rising oil prices, skyrocketing inflation, fractious civil society, and seemingly intractable wars appear not to have gone away. Most of these events are not of art-making, but they impact the lives of people in the region in a very significant way. But one thing is certain, whether the issues are old or new, in order to make lasting progress, we must address and promote our narrow national self-interest firmly within the framework of the interests of us all. None of us will be safe until we are all safe. None of us will develop sustainably or securely if we leave our neighbors behind. None of us will truly prosper if our resources are forever taxed by the poverty and instability of those nearby. Going it alone will not work. That is not to say that while we continue to strengthen and build our region, we should dilute or abandon the founding principle of our nation-states, namely, the right to self-determination. And when that principle is tested, we must stand firm. This is true whether it is the border disputes such as the longstanding issues between Guyana and Venezuela, Belize and Guatemala, or as it concerns the internal democracy in our associate states of Bermuda, the Turks and Caicos Islands, and the British Virgin Islands. Further feel, we also reaffirm our support for the people of Ukraine, whose sovereignty is being threatened by the Russian invasion of their territory. As neighbors, we should continue to embrace each other and know that we will all succeed if we hold fast the threads that bind us together. Colleagues and friends, the 50th anniversary of Caricom presents us with a golden opportunity. In celebrating the institutions and achievements of these five decades, the many peoples of our region should look back and rightly feel a sense of pride in all that has been gained and the value added to the region. But it is also presents, but it also presents an occasion to look forward, to seize the opportunity to collaborate, to cooperate, and through our collective effort, build a stronger, more resilient, and more prosperous region. The University of the West Indies is a shining testament to the difference Caricom has made to the lives of the people of the region. Let us build the equivalent in other areas of life. While our work here over the next few days will be all-consuming, I do hope you find just enough time to experience our islands, our people, and our culture. And if not on this visit, then certainly the next. Whatever the reason, whatever the time, you are most welcome. I thank you.
The incumbent Chair of Caricom, Prime Minister of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, We welcome the Most Reverend Drexel W. Gomez, Retired Anglican Archbishop of the Province of the West Indies, to give us the benediction. Please remain standing.
Let us pray. Sovereign Lord and Heavenly Father, to you belong all power and glory. You are the source of all goodness. Your mercies are without number and without end. Remember, Lord, for good, all the inhabitants of your created universe, especially all who in every place call upon your name and seek your enabling grace. And may your kingdom come in all the world, on earth as it is in heaven. At this time, Lord, we entreat you to look graciously upon the countries of our beloved Caribbean homeland, represented at this 44th meeting of the Heads of Government of Caricom. We offer special petitions for the leaders of our Caricom states and all who make decisions on our behalf, that they may be guided by your Holy Spirit to direct our affairs in the ways of justice, truth, and freedom for all the inhabitants of our Caribbean lands. And we pray for wisdom and discernment for our leaders that will facilitate in time the improvement in the quality of life for all Caribbean peoples. And finally, Father, we request that you let your blessing rest upon our families and those we love. As we intentionally seek to strengthen home and family life across our Caribbean lands, watch over the young facing so many challenges, support the aged, relieve those in pain and sickness, and encourage those who render assistance to them. Comfort the sorrowful and to the poor, the hungry, the unemployed, and all victims of discrimination of any kind. We ask you, Lord, to give relief, justice, and protection across our Caribbean land. And Lord, let your peace, your infinite peace, rest upon us all through your Son, Jesus Christ, our ever-living Lord and Savior. Amen and amen.
We have come to the end of our program. On behalf of the members of Caricom and the people of the Commonwealth of the Bahamas, we thank you for your presence here this evening. We ask that you allow our dignitaries to leave first and to join us in the foyer for However, it is not fitting to end an event like this in the Bahamas without the pulsating sounds of Junkanoo. Welcome, Color's Entertainment.